Hello, this is the our new partner, the Royal High School Royal High School this is the SIDA public hearing the SIDA Mamamaysin tax abatement, JP Holdings the 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 right, the the uh the 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 size those meet, will it what true? alright, this uh the SIDA Economic Development, Commonwealth Economic Development Authority, uh, Public Hearing, the SIDA JP Holdings the public, and Marianas High School Auditorium, this is the Massachusetts City Park we're gonna take it live from Kuri, the partner of Kuri the 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 specialist in the public hearing coverage the 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 presidential election the 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 ahead, the former president Donald Trump the 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 magic number 270 electoral votes every electoral college now, no mystery, the vote vote will be will will president is the former president Trump okay this uh, both SIDA part of the cover at the pub alright, with uh, specialist in the coverage, but it's the Commonwealth Economic Development Authority, Public Hearing, what to be Marianas High School Auditorium but it's the Mamamaysin Tax Abatement JP Holdings but uh, Mamamaysin the 25 years, the 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 tax sa the 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 Marianas Bandan the Iris, the was uh, simply office name yes sir one to Molly, many okay, this uh so again, the the join, the Marianas the 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 special coverage, this is the for the SIDA public hearing, the uh, Marianas High School Auditorium but it's the 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 company JP Holdings, Mamamaysin, SIDA Tax Abatement, the 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 tax sa water money the the minus ups on pesos, for the 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 who who the the SIDA the company alright, this uh, the the of coverage, this is the Marianas High School, the 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 cover, you know yeah the 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 the
Alright, good evening everybody uh, like to thank you all first of all for showing up tonight, and of course welcome you here tonight to our public hearing uh, the reason for the hearing tonight, this public hearing is to address a qualified certificate application um, the applicants are here, to our right, to your left um, so just gonna go ahead and give a brief introduction and then we'll get into uh, the applicant will have time about thirty minutes to present to present their proposal, and uh, we'll take questions after that so, my name is Derek Sasomoto, and I'm currently the comptroller and acting executive director for the Commonwealth Economic Development Authority to my left, I have our economic development manager, Gabe Guerrero and our executive assistant, executive secretary, S. Warren to my right, I have our director, Mike Sablon and of course, to the right, we have our applicant, which they will have an opportunity to present and introduce themselves so and just sort of, just a little bit of housekeeping matter, so if you have not signed in, everyone who's here the applicant you sign in, there is a sign in sheet in front, on the clipboard um, as well, um, this meeting will also be recorded, this hearing is going to be recorded and the recording will be shared with the rest of the board members when I'm presenting it um, so again, please sign in if you haven't done so and uh, if anyone needs the rest of them, I believe they are outside, uh, to the right, at the table um, there's actually water here as well, if you if you if you if you're thirsty um, so yeah, so, um, we're here to allow this our journey is to allow the public to hear the applicant's proposal and of course, ask any questions that you have and we, uh, and we will be taking notes and of course, it will be recorded, and it will allow our board members to absorb all the questions being asked and address the issues and of course, uh, allow them an opportunity as well to then, based on all the input feedback and questions uh, to meet with the applicant further down the road, to further, uh, the process of, of exchanging the application so, at this point, um, I would like to turn it over to our applicant, and we will give him about half an hour to present
Hi, yeah, good evening everyone, and thank you very much for coming along to this uh, hearing, and any important questions, I don't my name is John Stewart, I'm uh uh my wife and myself are, are the are the, sorry, just, just my uh, wife and I, are JMP Holdings, uh, we're put in that profession for the QC based on uh, it's primarily based on aviation, but it's uh, it's an old round picture for what we do on the island here for some time in any case, John Stewart's my name Paul Stewart's my wife, she's not here at the moment, unfortunately, and uh, you know, as I'm here it's um, she's basically the tax attorney, but she's been very helpful in setting this up for us, and and working with us to come, make this all come together so, while we're preparing tonight, we've got, um it basically is, uh sort of all these screenshots, I guess, we've put together in a present in a present, and, uh, presentation, and i- if you don't want, we'd like, uh, questions and comments to wait until we're finished and self-entertain or whatever um, so, uh, let's start with it, I guess, um we're starting with, uh, what we are, who we are, and what we're trying to do, so nineteen ninety-five is when we, um, set up, uh, put on sidehand, uh, by full aeroplane, the China miner from, uh, Australia and we started a skydiving operation um, we had been operating here we had a break during the financial, uh, crisis there, to eliminate a little bit, and we went on, and we've been operating in this region for nearly thirty years now, I think it is thirty years this year so, um, we have sort of diversified a little bit, and from skydiving initially, and adventure tourism to a certain degree, and we went into air cargo and we were in air cargo for some time, and then we had COVID hit, uh, just, jumping, everything was breaking, COVID hit and uh, once COVID came on, uh, running with our cargo, we did, we've got a contract with the United States Postal, Postal Service through United so, um, that is what sustained our efforts, uh, to maintain this skydiving, going through the whole thing um, was very difficult, and still is, the tourism numbers are knocked back anywhere near where they used to be and we've come across another difficulty, and that's the transportation between islands um, it's not something that I planned to do, but, um, through COVID, there was, uh, no option, we had to we had to man up and take on some flights, and we flew for a couple of weeks without any remuneration at all simply because there was no one else flying so, at that point in time, we got our license changed, and then we were able to keep going, um carrying people, and we're doing charter operations from there on in so, we lasted doing that for roughly two months um, we, from there, just went back to our routine of, um, cargo between the islands, and then, you know, there's a couple of typhoons along the way sort of slowed things down for everyone, but for us, we pitched in again, and, uh, we helped through typhoon U2 and typhoon, uh, Marwol either way, so when, obviously, U2, it was here, sidehand, whereas the most of the damage was done, but we were bringing all the equipment from Guam into here, and obviously, the worst, uh, reverse happened when we, um, when Marwol hit, uh, just back in twenty-three, March, May twenty-three so, with all these difficulties present themselves, uh, here in the CMI, it's not an easy way to place to operate and, you know, it's, uh, in all honesty, taking on this venture, um, during, doing customers and, uh, aircraft and so forth, we're sort of positioned well for it, because we're pretty much the only people that have built anything on the airport for the last, since two thousand at least and so, and Mahisha, that you helped find one of them so, we, um, we had Henrich here, we had three buildings, two thousand, eight thousand, thirteen thousand, three hundred feet, um, we so, we're very good with facilities, and we've got our own, uh, crew of mechanics and pilots that we operate from here and along so, basically, um the way things have eventuated over the last couple of years, um, there's been a need here, and, um, having, or putting the community at ransom to avoid payments is not really the style that we want to see in carrier here, so without naming names, everyone knows what's going on, um, and we've decided to pitch in our efforts are sort of, you know, they're gonna be minimal to start with, and then we'll grow with it, it's, it's not a very, um these days, everything in aviation is expensive, so it's not a very, uh, easy thing to undertake, and nor is it a one out with a lot of thought and stress, without even starting so, our intention is to start with a, um passenger service, uh, between the islands, uh, mainly between sidehand, teen, and rider we've got a, we'll then look at Guam going forward, but we need to, facilities there to make sure that we can make that, uh, next step, and we're working hard to move work with Guam International Airport Authority, and to try and make that happen so, we're intending on starting, and don't hold me to this, uh, mid-December is, uh, our startup proposed date at the moment, and, um, we're pretty confident we'll be able to get things in place by then the difficulty with doing anything in aviation here is, is where we're located the, um, getting aircraft here is efficient on its own, and then, once you've got the aircraft, is maintaining the aircraft then, of course, you've got personnel, um, pilots, mechanics, that we've got to get onto island as well so, it takes time, and, uh, we hopefully, with us being awarded the, uh, QC if we are well awarded the QC, uh, that will give us, you know, the incentive to actually make this, bring it together and make it work, and ensure that it's kind of possible as it can but again, it's something that you just can't turn the key, and that comes out of night, um I think we'll start with the slide presentation, and, um, then we'll move through this, and sorry, we're gonna be repeating ourselves a little bit, uh, to keep this, uh, here um, okay, so you can see from the slide, um, we started with skydiving here, we've also diversified into the airplane, which probably you've seen it flying around the island um, it's a replica, it, the airplane itself is two thousand eighteen, date of manufacture but it's a replica of a nineteen thirty-two, I think it is, Zempra so, we've got the skydiving, this one side of the adventure tourism, we do, then enjoy flying, there's another one we do have other proposals or plans to come in line that, well, obviously, COVID slowed down, and well, pretty much prevented it to this stage cargo ops, which you see on the third slide we've been doing, and sitting, uh, and that on the last slide to your right is, uh, one of our airplanes that we're going to introduce to our fleet before the, um, commuter runs now, the, that airplane, that particular airplane, brand new one of those, these days is three point five plus million dollars um, depends what you fit out to get in the airplane our intention is to start with this airplane here, along with, we have another one on order that's due in December so, you can already see that there's a huge capital investment into that move on, okay, sorry um so, we're going into cost of operations, we've talked about the, um the hangars, this is one of the hangars that's actually here, um, it has hydraulic door on the front, and, um, honestly, close that for typhoons with the secure pins all the way across it to hold it in place, because we did have one door giveaway in U2, and so, which created a little damage um, the building itself, we contain, um, operations, pilots, um all our work guys at the back here supporting us, thank you very much, guys um, and we've got, uh, customs, which is making clearing and all that very easy for us, so we've got, uh, in the area, so oh, yeah, yeah, we've got, oh, sorry thanks, we've got someone here telling me what to do um, so we've got, we run these companies, Max, uh, and Zango Zango is, um, uh, the one thirty-five certificate holder, and it works in conjunction with Max to do the, uh, operational business side of things Zango employs the mechanics and pilots, while Max, um, facilitates all the other work, such as importing of cargo, receiving cargo, dispatching cargo um, and they work very well together, we're quite lucky we're holding some good contracts with, um, number one, uh, United, and United States Postal Service through that FedEx, DHL, and, uh, few other smaller operations sorry, I, well, I've gone out of order on this, so we're, we're working, um with, uh, different, where you can see that's a slide a slide of the, um, military, they were being, we've pulled up some very good military work, um, they've, uh they actually, without asking, so they wrote us this letter, which is, um, very, very good uh, if you ever wanna take a plane to, to look at it, we're on that, um, QR code that were given on the brochures, that's got all this presentation on it, so, that's worth a little read, to be honest, I was quite flattered when, by the time I finished um, so we're doing a fair bit with the ARD, and, um, we're greasing, I think, on it yeah, okay, so I've got to start reading off this one um, so we're bound, we're really, we're tight with them, and they're building more workforce, especially with the Tinian, um, buildup, and there's a lot more action happening in rider as well as sidehand it's gonna, that's gonna mean, create a need for more transfer, air transportation, and we believe our timing will be quite good as we move forward into, uh, the new year, um, we will then see uh, things develop, more, more so from our side, if we're awarded the QC, simply because, uh, it takes time to get airplanes here, it takes time to get people here so, if we're successful, we'll move forward as fast as we can, um sorry, I'm just, as I said, I'm behind this, but, um, the military side of things, with cargo, cargo side of things, there's something that we do all the time, mail is something we do all the time too and one good news on the mail side, if anyone's from Tinian's here, that we will be starting five day, we service soon it was two days, and we're only five days short of it, um we're just looking, we're looking at routes here, um, one of them is, uh, the, everyone asked about the Guam, like, are we gonna do Guam? as I said before, yes, we are going to do Guam, as long as we can, uh, be, get facilitated properly in Guam, meaning hangar and offices, I'm sorry, um, hangar and offices to work from, obviously, it's paramount that we have this in place, otherwise, I'll lose another airplane next time, I guess so I think move on it's, this is, the airplane is my exit, thank God the, this airplane, as I said, this brand new, it, it comes in at, um, three point five million dollars plus this is a secondhand one that we've got a photo of, but it's in great condition and, um, air conditioned, very comfortable, fast, and, uh- um, air conditioned, very comfortable, fast and, um, very reliable aircraft. And we've got some very good mechanics on, and that's with us, thank you, guys. And, um, we keep these things flying, so that's their goal and we'll increase the fleet. As I said, the next stage is a brand new airplane, um, end of December. So by the time we get it out, we're probably generating that latest, that's my base.
All right, guys, so, uh, nice to meet you. Uh, my background, I'm just here really in a capacity as a tax attorney, there's some other things I'm going to explain, but really I'm just kind of focused on seeing on the financial element of what's necessary to make this possible. Uh, but, you know, one thing I want to touch on before we get into that is one big issue that doesn't put the CMI on the map is because you really, you can't even find flights here. You know, when you want to say, oh, I want to go to Rota, for example, I book one hundred percent of my flights on Google flights. If I say I want to go to Rota and says, sorry, there's no way there, do you want to go to Saipan? You know, we are trying to, with this airline, really get them caught up with the times. So when people are going online, one, they actually know this place exists, two, they know there are options to get here because when I first was coming out here, so I, just for context, recently relocated here this year and have been coming out here for about a couple of years and, you know, trying to come out here, I was like, why is it so difficult? Like, I thought it was only possible to go to Saipan because there were no flights online and when I first came here, you know, there was Southern and Star, but neither of them were on Google flights, so like, we had to Google and then be like, oh, okay, go to their website and do things a really old school way. So one thing that we want this airline to focus on is like, you know, being there on in twenty twenty-four, you can book on, you know, your phone or whatever and it doesn't have to be on their direct website and, you know, you don't, you can check in on your phone and have a digital ticket, you don't have to get something printed or have a color-coded system or anything like that. So just catching, you know, this guy right up to, or this, catching up, this will start ahead, but to where everywhere else is, just in terms of standards with, um, digitalization and everything, but, you know. Uh, one thing I want to start by saying before we really get into, you know, why a QC is necessary, because obviously a QC would result in an abatement of taxes. So yes, there are tax revenues that would be impacted by this, but whatever in this room needs to realize is that one hundred percent of the landing fees paid towards Rota and Tinian are paid by MAX. So when they start landing more, the collected landing fees goes up, you know, so that's what a lot of people, you know, are going to overlook going into this is they're going to think of the tax revenues, but not the landing fees revenues, you know. And on here, it has a list of the airlines that pay their landing fees, you know, MAX, Jeju, Oceana, Hong Kong Express and United who are currently landing here. And all of these airlines are already paying six figures in landing fees. So if they start landing more in Rota and Tinian, those landing fees that are collected go up. So that's what everyone needs to remember, you know, those airports are completely reliant on MAX. If MAX is not flying into those airports, who, where do the landing fees come from? That's what everyone needs to, you know, remember. So sure, there might be an abatement of taxes, but that means there's going to be an increase of landing fees, you know. I am not here to dig into how long it has been since other airlines have paid their landing fees, but, you know, the issue is that is substantial revenue as well. If they're already paying six figures, you know, if they start flying more than double of their cargo, triple, quadruple, then landing fees just up and up and up. And then if they can have more landing fees that are actually being paid, maybe we can get landing fees to an affordable rate that we can attract more airlines here, not just MAX. No one here wants a monopoly. A monopoly is not good for anyone. So to get, you know, the landing fee collections up, you know, one, they need to be enforced against the companies that are responsible for paying those fees and two, they need to consider who is actually paying these fees and where these other revenues are coming from. So sure, you know, there might be some tax savings for them, but I would tell you, landing fees are one of the most substantial expenses in operating aviation here, you know, like I was like, this math can't be right because the landing fees, they're not based, you know, on your minimum and takeoff weight or, or I guess maximum, whatever. So, sorry, just to back out, I'm not in aviation, so bear with me, I know taxes better, but it's based on the maximum landing rate of a plane. So if an airplane lands completely empty, they're still paying the same exact landing fee as if they land completely full. So they're also, you know, flying heavier planes because they're, you know, for example, this is going to be a nine-seater, a nine-seater is heavier than a five-seater or a three-seater or a five, you know, so these are more substantial revenues that are coming from the landing fees. Obviously, there needs to be some kind of support because no airline can really survive unless they're a massive airline because there is no essential air services out here anymore. I think everyone's aware of, you know, that funding being lost had disastrous impacts on the aviation industry. So, you know, so without that and with actually paying their landing fees, you know, how are they going to support an airline and be affordable? So just moving on from that, I just want to explain that, again, on its face, it seems, oh, you know, we're asking for them to not be paying taxes, but what people don't think of is that, you know, if we're able to bring more people into these islands and across these islands, those people coming in, they're going to go, you know, rent a hotel, rent a car, they're going to have to eat and all of those things are subject, you know, to tax in one way or another, PGRTs. So there's this incidental trickle down into the economy, if they can help and bring people back, you know they have incentive in bringing tourism back, they're known for skydiving, they're not just going to be like, oh, you know, whatever, we give up on skydiving. No, they've been doing it for thirty years. They want to see this tourism industry recover, you know, I'd say more than the average person in the CMI. So they have a lot of skin in the game to make this happen, help bring people back in here and, you know, bring in other tax revenues. So there's an incidental effect that, you know, a lot of people overlook because then when these companies have increased revenues in their business, that means more BGRT, you know, for example, which means more tax revenue, which means better infrastructure, which means better education, better opportunities, better roads, better salaries for our government workers, you know, there's a trickle down benefit to everyone involved and that's, you know, what people really need to think of when, you know, thinking about this QC is sure, there's going to be some benefit to that, but you know what? How often are they in the news for not paying something? They have never had any kind of dispute with the government, they pay everything, they're asking for help to make this possible because I think we all understand that there needs to be another option. So, you know, just kind of going into that, there's obviously a lot of long-term benefits, I'm not going to read these verbatim, but obviously the immediate benefit is immediately there are going to be more landing fees collected because they pay their landing fees timely. So that tax savings really is just going into something else that's paid to the government, it's just paid to a different part. And I think we all agree, you know, we could use a little more funding in those airports, the airports could use a little more help and the reason, you know, they struggle is because there's not a lot of landing fees being paid because one, it's too expensive to incentivize new airlines and two, the CMI has been bullied into not, you know, just standing by while they're not getting landing fees. So that's just something people need to consider, you know. Um, I'm going to actually go back up back because I know the price and thing will distract people. So I just really wanted to, you know, explain that when you look at this on its face and it looks like a tax savings, it's really not because to make this airline affordable where people can actually afford to fly around, you know, that has to come from somewhere. You can't fly a plane that can cost up to three point five million dollars, you know, which has, you know, great features, great safety, records and ratings and everything. You can't get those types of qualities of planes, harm the affordable rates, well, there's no essential air services, well, landing fees are the way they are, you know, there has to be something, there has to be some way to bridge the gap to make this possible because I'll tell you, it's not going to be, if there's, you know, no other benefit, it's not going to be a smart business for them to be in. They are putting a lot on the line if they're doing this without a QC. I, I say it doesn't make sense, it's too risky without it because there are very high costs of aviation and they have to, you know, have some way to pay for these planes. Everyone was impacted by COVID, but, you know, they were impacted, you know, they have skydiving, but they, they keep it going, they want tourism to recover, they didn't lay off and their people would give up, you know. So that's kind of my piece, I don't want to go home like a whole ramble of that, but just understanding, you know, the trickle down of how it affects every other part of the economy and having an airline that does want to be more digital and leverage the relationships because there's a lot of untapped potential. You know, for example, there is a program with the federal government, the military that they essentially provide you a sort of stipend, uh, where you can take leave for you or your family and go somewhere and they will pay for that. I don't know why the CMI is not marketing themselves as an option for that, you know, I think there's a lot of great potential and they do, please hold on for explaining that program to me. Um, but there are a lot of potentials right there and then number two, adventure tourism, this place, like I can tell you, you know, this is the second largest dip line in North America is in Puerto Rico, it's called the Monster. Like, people will, not that, that's not mine with Puerto Rico, but like, that's something they're known for in having very large dip lines. Like, why can't the CMI find things to set themselves apart, obviously Puerto Rico's known for a lot of things, but in terms of adventure tourism, they have a lot, like, you could literally do anything in Puerto Rico, I feel like. So, you know, and the CMI, they have so many options here, but nothing really gets promoted. This, you know, this is not a low market in place and it's not, you know, I'm just, not just to Asia, but like all of the US, you know, people, whenever I'm like, oh, the CMI, what's that? You know, like, I think this place really has a lot of potential and to put itself on the map, but, you know, we also need private citizens in a sense to really step in and help this tourism industry recover because it can't just, you know, be on the government, someone needs to do something and I don't think anyone wants this monopolization to continue, I think competition is a good thing, it's healthy for the economy. So I hope you guys support it, you know, that said, I already put the prices up here, so thank you guys for still paying attention for the most part, but, uh, you know, to make this possible, all of this really is contingent on being able to get a QC because obviously it's not sustainable to have these types of planes, you know, so you either sacrifice the quality of planes and you're going to get, you know, packed in like a can of sardines into like a little training plane or you're going to have more comfortable planes, you know, with, you know, higher safety rates and all of these things, but these prices are only possible if there's some way to, you know, help support them, you know. The government has helped so many other businesses in a sense survive, whether it was through ARPA, you know, and I wasn't here for that, so I'm not, I don't fully understand that part, but, and, you know, looking the other way on landing fees for years and years and years and years and years and years. Uh, you know, those things have helped those businesses survive, so all they're asking is that they also get some kind of help, you know, and to make this happen because without it, it's just not economically viable and that's just my opinion as a tax attorney. So, um, you know, and just looking at the books or, or like the projections of what this is going to cost and what these prices would be, you know, to make it viable, the QC really has to happen or like these prices, you know, they can still start an airline, but they can't start an airline that can be competitive when they have nicer planes, you know, you can't go on a Spirit plane or a Delta plane and expect them to be the same cost, you know. So that's my, my piece, I guess, is we're going to turn it for questions unless there's anything else you want to add on. Okay. Do we have questions?
Prior to going to the questions section, I want to just, uh, to make you ask me that. So first of all, I want to acknowledge the presence of the Commonwealth Economic Development Authorities, China, the board, Mr. Paco Moly. Um, secondly, I'd like to ask for anyone who will come up to submit a public comment, if you can please identify yourself and if you have not signed in afterwards, if you would please sign in. And the last thing is for anyone who would be interested to submit written comments, I suppose, all connotation, all comments, you can submit the written comments physically to the Commonwealth Economic Development Authorities office located in San Jose at the Morgan Building, or you can email that, those written comments to j.lalushus@developcmi.com. If you need that email address again later, feel free to see me or shoot right there and we'll give you that address again. But again, please identify yourself and if you haven't signed in, thank you very much. And we'll go into the questions, question session now. Oh, yeah, there's the right corner, I'll plug it in. All right, so we're taking any questions, if anyone wants to come up and identify themselves or just raise your hand, can come out and ask you the questions.
Thank you very much. My name is Lucia Blanco Martita, resident of Tinian, um, also resident of Saipan at the moment. I have a bunch of questions and, and, um, some of the concerns, um, and maybe it's, uh, it's in the details of whatever QC application is. Um, what is the amount of the estimated abatement? So if you have here that it's an eight point two million dollar investment for a twenty-five year period, um, I'm not sure what that amounts to in terms of us, um, looking at the value of that abatement as opposed to the trickle down effect or the other monetary benefits from that? Is there a maximum of the abatement amount that is being contemplated? And, um, so along with that, in terms of what the, what that abatement, abatement would perhaps affect, um, in terms of medical referral flights, you know, that's one of our biggest thing from Tinian to Saipan. Um, and to what extent, there, there will be of course charges for those flights for the government as we do our medical referral. What does that, how does that abatement affect, um, the flights, is the subsidized flights included as part of that so-called abatement? Some of the considerations for that opportunity? And, um, I'm excited to hear that we're going to have mail now twice a week, I mean, more than twice a week, five-day mail service to Tinian. Um, I didn't catch when we're looking at starting that. In, in connection with the operations, you know, one of the, uh, concerns that we see is, um, we've got fights between Saipan, Tinian and Rota. However, I haven't seen any really pilots from the residents coming up, the, the words or mechanics from, you know, from the residents. In terms of building our workforce on Tinian, I, I see it as a possibility. Do you have any plans for partnering with either NTI or the college or the municipalities to promote, to provide for some access to the training programs for those positions? And then, uh, in connection with, uh, with the abatement, uh, so it seems like, of course, uh, MAC is in position now to participate in this, um, money that is going to be realized from the, um, the investment by the military in connection with the divert. And so, and of course, that's maybe off the books, I don't know, in terms of how to weigh in on the, the cost and the benefits that MAC stands to realize versus the abatement that the CMI is putting forth, um, considering, of course, the eight point two million dollar investment. And, um, I do see that in connection with my previous question about the training program, I do see that you have internship, but of course internship is different from actual hands-on training, uh, because there are probably going to be requirements to avail of those internship positions, but, uh, that's kudos to you for having that available too, but I would like to see more involvement, um, you know, uh, facilitation or partnership for this program. Um, and then, uh, in terms of the flights, um, the flights, are, are you having, going to have scheduled flights or on-demand? Um, and it's kind of tedious for me to ask, so if there's one passenger which is still flying the flight, flying the plane versus, you know, nine passengers, um, sometimes a lot, a lot of times that might happen with Tinian, right? I've been a sole passenger on some of those, quite a few of those flights. Um, so in terms of the economics of, um, it being a survival of the, the MAC, I'm just kind of curious about that. And then, uh, lastly, would you happen to have a frequent flyer program? Just a thought. And then, um, in terms of air cargo, and now we've got, in the past, we've always had this issue with, uh, farmers trying to, uh, sell their goods. with farmers trying to sell their goods and export their goods to other places. Um, and usually, it's the, the flight, uh, the transportation cost is pretty prohibitive. Um, I was once growing the field and all those things. And it's probably cheaper to just give it away than it is to send it to people here that may have use for it. Um, and, uh, yeah, I think that's about it. Thank you very much for letting me ask a bunch of questions.
Sure. So, um, just to kinda start at the beginning of your questions regarding the tax abatement, uh, just so we're all on the same page, we're not asking for, you know, $8.2 million. That's what they would be investing. And, you know, there's not going to be any immediately realizable tax revenue loss by the CNMI under this venture. Because even without a QC, if they went forward with this, you know, when you're investing that money, though, that money is going to offset whatever income, because this is a DVA of ZAVO, which aren't exist, you know? So, and they all flow, that's the thing, these companies, they all really work together. They're a whole in company, you know? Not to make it super complicated, but everything ties together. So, you know, for at least the first few years, it would all be a loss because of, you know, the investments they're gonna have to make upfront. So, there's, for several years, there will not be any immediately real, immediately realizable actual loss, because even without a QC, they would still, you know, have these associated expenses. So, that's just something to keep in mind, is this would be something that would benefit them in the future. It's not an immediate benefit. In a sense, sure, you know, they're, they wouldn't be paying tax those years. But again, if they're gonna make these investments no matter what, they still have expenses associated. So, it would have to be something that they would be successful and get to the point that that airline is actually profiting, you know, along with their other businesses, because obviously, things are still recovering. There's not gonna be any tax revenue loss from skydiving, you know? We saw what happened in the tourism industry. Um, so, no immediate loss. We can't quantify it, because, you know, as much as I wish, I could be like, this is what revenue's gonna be next year. You never know. COVID has taught us that, you never know what life will throw at you. So, there's no numerical value that we can quantify. In terms of the subsidies you mentioned, there aren't, MAC has not received any subsidies for any medical flights or anything like that. Um, so, you know, that's definitely something separate. Uh, and then, there was one more part of your question I was gonna answer. Oh yes, the frequent flyer, you know? If this happens and everything, eventually down the line, of course, there would be something like that. Um, leave the rest, or John, I hope I'm not forgetting any of the financial-related ones, but operational, I'm gonna pass it over.
Thanks. Um, so, let's just quickly go back to your question about medical relief. Um, we, this abatement has got nothing to do with it, not affected it whatsoever. Um, so, it's a good thing there. Agriculture, as it is, we do a agriculture thing for Rota. Um, we've done, started to doing more agriculture for Tinian and the Triple J efforts over there, doing a lot of farming. So, that's increasing gradually. Um, we offer special days for Rota, um, and on Thursdays. And we'll be commending the same thing to Tinian now that we're going to be going more frequently to Tinian with our mail delivery. And we'll make that available as well. Internship, internship you've mentioned, there's, I don't know what you're talking about in regard to that. Um, frequent flyer, same as what Gina said. Um, the, if we fly with one passenger or with a full load of nine passengers, that's, um, that's what you have to do when you've set up a scheduled, uh, airfare route, I guess. Um, at the moment, just a full transparency here, with the aircraft that we're positioning, our Tinian to Saipan run will be done by a seven-seater aircraft, not a nine-seater. Nine-seater will be used from Saipan to Rota, Rota to Guam, Guam to Tinian, and also Tinian to Rota, that type of leg. Anything which are very small leg. A turbine aircraft, you can't use because the cycles basically affect the engine life and so forth. So, we will be, um, doing that. And to answer your question, if you're one passenger, we've got no choice. If we're running a scheduled, um, operation, we have to fly. If we, um, are running a charter operation, a charter flights, which we do too, that depending on the person hiring the airplane, it could be one to seven, and one to one, and one to nine in the other. So, we would carry that. Um, so hopefully, that answers your questions.
You do have the internship issue on your.
Yeah, so that's something that would come down the line of doing like college internships. You know, that's something the airline would first have to be set up. There's nothing that's been established yet. You know, so this is more, and like, they're not gonna be like interning as mechanics or anything. With, I already mentioned hiring local. Uh, there's actually a nationwide shortage of aircraft mechanics. So, I think John would love to hire local if there were any aircraft mechanics, and they are really hard to come by. But, you know, um, most of his employees are local. So, if he's got employees, Tinian, Rota, uh, Guam, and Saipan, so. That helps it all. But, I guess, next question?
Good evening, Alex Alonier, San Holdings Corporation. Uh, first off, I want to establish that I absolutely support this qualified certification for many reasons. And I wanna try to give people somewhat of a historical perspective, if you will, about airlines in Turin. I think CPA can speak to this a little bit better than ourselves, um, SIDA as well, and, um, the residents of Rota, um, historically, um, and Antony, excuse me. But if you look over the historical perspective of travel into Ireland with the CNMI, we have probably had eight iterations of airline service in Ireland, um, including the more recent departure of Freedom Air, who was here for, like John, must, must have been about 30 years. Um, and why are these airlines coming and going so frequently or so often over the course of our history? Uh, I'm gonna take you all the way back to the 90s. I used to be with Northwest Airlines, I ran the GSA for Northwest here. And we had a co-chair agreement with then-Sino partners, um, who co-shared, so the frequent flyer aspect was a product of co-sharing with Northwest Airlines on these inter-island 330 shorts. Uh, when we ran frequently between Rota, Saipan, Tinian, Guam. Um, but as things went by, we lost Japan market, uh, Japan Airlines left. Uh, we had at one point into the Rota market at its height 27,000 tourists, um, under charter, and obviously, the other airlines that were operating in that timeline. Why did these end? These ended because we lost the apparel industry. We lost cargo into those bellies. And sure enough, everything else that came in ancillary to support the tourism within this market also went away. So, all the large configuration for Northwest Airlines, its partner with Sino, those contracts went away when we lost a significant revenue base to support tourism within the islands. So, I wanted to give you that little perspective about how tourism has been supported. And when we lost near 5,000, and I'll stand corrected from the people of Rota, but near 5,000 populous base in Rota with 300-plus room nights in Rota, with significant investment done by Japanese locals and whatnot, again, on the basis that we lost a significant impact of our, our market base. And that was the apparel business that was supporting a lot of this stuff. Why am I giving you this perspective? I give you this perspective because John's been here for 30 years, yes, but he's been doing other types of businesses. He hasn't gotten the air passenger business, because a little running joke in our industry, why do you go into cargo? Because passengers don't complain. But anyways, our cargo doesn't play, sorry. See, that joke. Anyways, go ahead and display.
You can kick a box, is what I said.
There you go. So, good, coming up into this timeline, what are we, what are we witnessing? We witnessed in the COVID timeline, we had fairness Southern Airways. They had an $8 million, what was essentially an essential air service subsidy. So, a plane traveled, they got a subsidy. Um, my understanding was they only consumed up to about $1,000,250 of that subsidy. But what we, what did we have? We had seven planes here, we had frequency, we had lower rates, we had frequency. And we had movement of people in Turin. And we were giving a leg up to the Rota market and Tinian, um, to have an opportunity and economy. And why do I say this? Because as senators know, and congressmen, and individuals in Rota, we started to see new businesses open up. We started to see restaurants open up, we started to see things open up in that time. And I'm talking about COVID here. People are opening up businesses on Rota, because there was hope. We put a half a million dollars more into our hotel development on the premise that we were going to see more frequency in Rota. And so, with this opportunity, and yes, there is a competing airline in play, um, and we're talking inter-island. But at this rate, if we don't have subsidies to an airline or orientation, they can't reduce rates to the level that we're talking about here today. Or we would already see it in the current operator, who is charging us $30, $330 to go to Rota, another $400 to go to Guam. So, $730 to go in our island if you wanted to use their airline and run back and forth. It has completely diminished the hope that we have on Rota. And I'll purpose by saying that I operate the Valentino Hotel on Rota. And, um, you know, we've, we've lost significant base in the Southern Airways, um, into Rota, um, and Saipan. And so, I'm hoping that with this new venture, with the approval of the QC and its abatements, that we are able to see these rate structures, that we are able to see more frequency. And eventually, to the point made, more individuals coming to Rota, to Tinian, and allowing smaller economies to have a leg up. And, you know, I went to say that we had, I think, near 5,000 people in Rota. Um, you know, Senator, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're near 1,200 if. Based on, on Rota. And so, let's provide an opportunity to give this, uh, a venture time to, to improve the, uh, economy for Rota. And as we speak today, it's my understanding that the administration is focused on looking at essential air service anyways, from federally subsidies, federal subsidies, that they know are essential to ensuring that we can get this type of frequency and these type of rate structures in Turin, in Turin. Or they don't have an opportunity to grow. And so, I'll, I'll end my statement here by, again, hopefully, um, SIDA, the government, uh, approves this qualifying decision again, and we can see an opportunity for Rota, Rota to, in Saipan, Guam, to connect the people in Turin. Thank you.
Hi, uh, Jay Santos here. I work with Triple J. Briefly, I'm gonna talk about Triple J and, and, and Micronesian Air Cargo, but also want to touch on a couple of things personally with John and Paula. Um, I'm gonna ask SIDA and the boarder, please not hold John accountable for his poor presentation skills, but, uh, we hope that doesn't uh, be part of the deciding factor on this QC. Um, Triple J does, uh, uh, some business with, with John and, and, and Micronesian Air Cargo out of Guam. And we're, we're fortunate to be able to get product out of Guam and into Saipan for stuff that we can't ship, uh, via ocean freight, a lot of food items. And, you know, the service that's provided, and a lot of the staff right here tonight, uh, they provide wonderful customer service. Uh, the rates are very competitive, and it makes us, uh, helps us manage our business here in Saipan, um, uh, for our customers here on Saipan. So, that's more on, on the business side. Um, uh, on the personal side, I, I wanna say that, uh, you know, over the years, and many of us in this room know this, uh, we've had many a fly-by-night companies come to our islands and want QC and want this and want that. They're all given, you know, rolled out the red carpet only to find out they're just like every other fly-by-night company that wants to take advantage of us here at our islands. And, you know, I've known John for a very long time, and the fact that him and Paula have been here for, uh, over 30 years speaks, uh, leaves some balance about how serious they are about being here in our islands and how much they love, they love our islands. So, I think that should say plenty about, uh, John and Paula and, and the fact that, uh, they wanna do business here and that we can trust the fact that, uh, that they will be here with good intentions, uh, not only for them and their business, but for, for us and, and our community as well. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Alright, we have, uh, we're gonna try and get questions from this side. We'll try to make it more.
Thank you. Um, so I, I am in post-war, sorry for the forced voice, it's not campaign voice. But I, I am the, the representative, it's a symbol of God. I, I'm the chairman of the Public Utility, uh, Transportation and Communication. And I do fully support, you know, the, um, access, uh, intention of opening this, uh, master cargo, you know, extension. Um, if I'm not mistaken, SIDA is still following public law 20...
12 dash 80.
Or, public law 12 dash 80, correct?
Yes.
Which means that they could ask for, and I'm pretty sure they probably will, but anyways, and for 100%, right, uh, and for 25 years, correct? They could ask for that. You know, I'm pretty sure that's what they're gonna want. But, you know, let's be, you know, not too gracious. I mean, not, not, let's not be too greedy as well. You know, I'm pretty sure that there is a fine line somewhere that could benefit everybody, not only MAC, but the community as whole. And it's a sad thing that, you know, in the military, we call it a single point of failure, when we're depending so much on tourism from the outside of the Commonwealth, we're technically like shooting ourselves in the foot, you know? Because every single one of us could be a tourist on any other island. Uh, because you don't live there, so you just go and visit, stay with family, whatever. But anyways, you go over there, you know, spend money, you know? And they could do likewise coming over here. So, and I hope that, you know, we could go all the way to Guam, you know, in the near future. So, it would only benefit, you know, the Commonwealth if we have this kind of service, you know, that competes with somebody else. Like everybody knows and everybody says it, monopoly is never a good thing. It's not good for business at all. You know, and with MAC being here for over 30 years, it shows the commitment. And the fact that they're not getting slapped with, you know, fines and late fees and, you know, I don't wanna pay bill fee, all kinds of fees, you know? Um, I really do support their, and I hope that you guys as well. So, thank you.
Anyone have a question?
Thank you, actually, I don't have a question. I do have a statement to make, though.
If it's, I can do that, I can make it.
Okay.
Mister Chairman and members of the Board of Directors of the Commonwealth Development Authority. My name is Daniel Okirwa, I'm a resident and boarder of Rota. And I live and witness to the many years of neglect toward continually recurring problem with unreliable air service to and from our island. Former governor, former lieutenant governor, senator, mayor, cabinet negotiator, the late President Timon Longa fought fearlessly and tirelessly to make sure that the leaders of the Commonwealth will support the people of Rota in its quest for fair and equitable treatment. Sadly, he passed away, and the issue, if also vigorously hard to resolve, is still to this day. to resolve is still, to this day, remain unfulfilled. The people of Rota have a long disappointing and tragic history of being forgotten by its leaders throughout its political history. Last November fourth, twenty twenty-four, we celebrated Citizenship Day, which commemorates the historic significance of the people of the Commonwealth becoming U.S. citizen. Yet, the most basic service for reliable, dependable, and affordable air service is still unavailable for the people of Rota. The people of the Commonwealth would not have achieved and enjoyed all that is good about our Commonwealth without the first senatorial district overwhelmingly supporting in the ratification of the covenant. The people of Rota cast the highest votes in the plebiscite. And all that they're hoping for is for their government to make available air service that will assist them in their struggles, the better their quarrel in life. This is after forty years of self-government. Tonight, I am here to support the application of Micronesia Air Connection Services for a qualified certificate award. This is an airline that is taking a big risk to offer inter-island air service for the people of Rota. I understand that Mac is locally owned by John and Paula Stewart and the people of Rota could not have been more grateful for their gutsy audacity to venture into this business. Mister Chairman, as member of the former governor's economic council, you understood quite well the undeniable importance of air service in our area and its devastating impact when it is not available or not there. Mac is offering to provide this critical absence, but with a little bit of help from the government, I can simply say that the people of Rota will welcome this airline with enthusiasm and great reading. Mister Chairman and members of the SIDA board, I respectfully, on behalf of the people of Rota, plead for affirmative support to MSC's application for qualified certificate and submit your unanimous consent to the governor for his approval. Respectfully, Sida and your kid.
All right, would anyone like to ask a question from? Please, um, state your name and ask your question.
Good evening. I'm, uh, Joey Snickless. I'm like, uh, my colleague Lucy, I'm also a resident of Tinyan and Saipan. Uh, I've been a commuter all of my life between Tinyan and, um, Saipan. And I, I stay here primarily, but, um, I still go down as much as I can. So I speak as a, on my behalf, as a commuter between Tinyan and Saipan. First of all, I'd like to say that I support the petition of JNP Holdings for a qualified certificate under the Investment Incentive Act as amended. Um, in looking through that act, um, there are some, um, issues that the board will be considering. And just in going through all of those, uh, factors, um, I, I, I would anticipate that they would, uh, you would find in favor of the petition. Um, I, I believe that there would be a positive impact on the tourism industry. Uh, there will certainly, uh, boost the capacity, uh, for inter-island travel, uh, the, uh, for tourists and for locals. Uh, I don't know Mr. Stewart, but I understand he's been here for more than thirty years. I do know that Mac provided, uh, quality service during COVID, uh, when we were having issues just to get home, um, on a daily basis because of the COVID, uh, epidemic. Uh, you, you know, from what I recall in, uh, economics, uh, competition should, uh, reduce consumer prices, namely our airfares. And it should improve, uh, the inter-island, uh, service experience for tourists and for locals. Um, it shouldn't create jobs. We've seen it. Uh, as a resident of Tinyan, I saw when we had two airlines servicing, in fact, I think we had three at one time, uh, the air taxi. Um, and what it did is it provided us with opportunities to select from one of the two, one of the three. And, um, fares are always competitive. And this wasn't too long ago. It was only, I think, twenty-five years ago, uh, when I was in high school, or we had the option. Right now, we don't. Um, if you look at the, uh, reduction of imports, um, I think if Mac is able to work with the Tinyan farmers, or CNMI farmers and ranchers, they can provide, uh, quality products to their brothers and sisters throughout, uh, the Marianas at lower rates, thereby, uh, hopefully, uh, reducing the need for imported goods, especially within the agriculture industry. Um, you look at, at this, the likelihood of success. I can't speak to the likelihood of success, but I would anticipate that with its business plan, they're going to maximize this opportunity and provide for the services, for the people, and for our visitors to the point where we're gonna benefit economically. Um, I'm sorry about that, but you spoke about landing fees. Uh, we, I would anticipate that there would be more collections of landing fees as a result of the increased traffic of, um, activity. And so just looking at the Event Incentive Investment Act of two thousand, um, and again, I'm not an expert, but I would think that the board would, would, and of course, I'm sure even have a couple more hearings. I would ask that there be one in Tinyan and in Rota, if possible. But, um, at the end of the day, those are the questions that you're gonna be asking yourselves. And just based on my many years of being a commuter and participating in this inter-island, mainly as a passenger or a shipper, um, but as an observer as well, um, I would think that this application is warrant, uh, warrants your approval. I would only, uh, as a resident of Tinyan, I, I would just ask that you work closely with, um, our ranchers and our farmers there, as well as our ranchers and farmers here in, um, Saipan and even in Rota, so that there will be more of this commerce going on because there's so much potential. But because it's so cost prohibitive, it just doesn't happen. And so perhaps this would be a channel for that, for the agriculture industry to, to thrive. And I think everybody agrees we want that to happen. Um, I would ask that you consider a scholarship program for the youth within the inter-islands, within the islands of the Marianas, and work closely with the inter-island medical program. Because, um, whether you like it or not, there are going to be those who are going to travel. Use your services because they're required to meet with a doctor here in Saipan and then go back home. So I, I support, uh, the proposal one hundred percent. I would ask that you consider working with the public, working with the municipalities, develop the programs that will benefit our community in general and specifically our youth. And, um, with that, I will go ahead and give my name, Mr. Estina Puente. Por favor, aprepa, aprepa y impréntase. Dejando que holdings, holdings para el estado Marianas. Si es posible.
My name is Oscar, Oscar Komontz. I'm representing myself. Um, I just want to do, just very quickly and shortly. I, I do support the, uh, twenty-five years up to one hundred percent, uh, for the tax benefits. But with the arrangement, the, on the abatement of income tax, the, everything. And the same with, uh, if it's a corporate income tax abatement. Rather than, rather than abatement, it would be repayment. But up to hundred percent and, uh, after twenty-five years. Um, the reasons I just spelled out, just in summary, uh, there's no teeth with an abatement on the part of the government for any enforcement for non-compliance. However, it's also a frustrating part on the, uh, on, on the beneficiary if repayment is, uh, is what is granted. And because there's no transparency there, unless the government provides some form of transparency. So with that, um, I detailed it in a letter to the Acting Executive Director for the board's consideration and for people, members in the legislature might want to consider as well. With that, thank you.
Sure. And just to kind of touch on that, sorry, real quick. Um, in terms of if they were to, you know, pay anything into the system and it's held on to and it's issued, uh, the CNMI mirrors the Internal Revenue Code, which by statute must issue statutory refund or interest at a rate of eight to ten percent. So that would actually be reversed to the CNMI because then they would be required to pay them interest if they did hold on to anything and do it that way, rather than just abating it. And these would be treated as large perp, other payments under, under the Internal Revenue Code. So by default, it's going to be a ten percent interest that the CNMI will have to pay out if they hold on to anything. So abatement is actually going to be more cost beneficial to the CNMI because they have to mirror the Internal Revenue Code unless they formally de-link. And there's no way the CNMI is going to get approved for any kind of de-bridge because they have to show that they can economically sustain themselves without federal support. So, um, maybe one day. But they would have to issue interest and it would just make the accounting very complicated because then it applies a lot of pressure to the division if they're holding on to anything and then they have to just end up issuing any sort of refund. That's going to be with interest. And, you know, ten percent per year, I mean, it doesn't sound like a lot, but, you know, it adds up because, I mean, it just puts a lot of pressure on them as well. I just wanted to just put out the mirroring provision there, so.
Ah, ladies and gentlemen, I don't have any questions, but I just have a statement to ask the board. My name is Osereki Oshie. I'm here by myself. Uh, I'm from Tinyan and I echo the sentiment of home mayor and, uh, attorney. I'd like to ask the board members to please, uh, approve the, uh, application. Competition is always nice for our people, so that's all. Thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Selena Babat. I'm here in two capacities, one as a senator, um, for the end of my legislature and one in my personal capacity as a daughter of the Marianas. As a government worker trying to improve the economic situation we are currently in, I rise today in support of JNP Holding CNMI LLC's operating as Micronesia Air Connection Services in pursuit of their qualified certificate for abatement of taxes. This investment value then equal two million dollars is poised to transform inter-island transportation within the state of mine, something that we all need, um, at this time. And we will definitely see improvements in air service quality. Currently, our inter-island air travel is highly dependent and solely dependent, actually, on a single provider, Star Marianas. This monopoly leaves us vulnerable to disruptions and price fluctuations. Uh, everybody here who has studied business would understand and know that that is a residual effect of a monopoly or one of the, uh, few effects of monopoly. All at the whim of the current air service provider. We would also be vulnerable to service interruptions as they have, uh, previously found during COVID when they stopped flying between the islands. And we were at their mercy. The government was at their mercy. And this is a constant concern for me as a policymaker because it has only resulted in exorbitant fees for our residents. And the lack of competition stifles our island's growth and it, and more importantly, it inconveniences our residents. Mac has proven itself to be a responsible corporate citizen, contributing significantly to our economy the past twenty-nine years and adhering to the high standards of business ethics. Uh, providing, by providing humanitarian flights, to provide disaster relief, uh, goods and cargo to our other municipalities. And by supporting their investment, their new passenger airline would inject much-needed competition which would naturally drive our prices down. By introducing competition, Mac, uh, will not only improve air service reliability, but our CNMI residents will also be given options, uh, in terms of air service. It will increase seat capacity, something that we need, but also that prices down, as I mentioned earlier. A competitive market ensures that consumers benefit from lower fares and increased choices. Moreover, Mac, with its longstanding commitment to the Marianas, brings a wealth of experience and a proven track record of responsible business practices. Now, some may argue that granting a QC for Mac creates an uneven level, uh, playing field. And I contend that true fairness lies in fostering competition on a competitive market. If Star Marianas is genuinely committed to providing quality services, they should be willing to invest or match the investment of Mac to the tune of eight point two million dollars uh, to improve their operations by upgrading their forty-year-old aircraft and pay their debt to the Commonwealth Ports Authority. Until then, we must continue to support initiatives that benefit our people, our government, and our community. I urge the SIDA board to favorably consider the application for QC for, uh, Mac, Micronesia Air Connection Services. And I would like to say for the record that upon your affirmative, uh, support and recommendation to the governor, I urge Governor Palacios to immediately approve their QC application. And by doing so, this board will be taking a decisive step towards better and much-needed air service, quality air service between the nations. Thank you, and I give my time.
Uh, good evening. Representative Castro, um, House Chairman of Education. I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to give my full support. Um, petition for support of JNP Holding CNMI. I really, you know, I think you have a good business model. Um, given our economic situation, related diversification is really good. This is adding a new product line, uh, product line that our Rota and Tinyan community agree we need. Um, just to give you some reference, um, I think we, a lot of the former speakers presented a lot about the economic benefits, but we have to also look at the qualitative benefits. Uh, when I was much younger, uh, my grandma, who's from Rota, would always go and attend the solos or funerals on Rota. Nowadays, cousins don't know cousins anymore just because it's so costly to visit Rota or Tinyan. Uh, so, you know, we also have to look back into our constitution and culture and community is a big part of our constitution. Um, economic benefits are important, but also look at the qualitative benefits. But this business right here has proven itself for how many years? And I believe they're worthy of this qualifying certificate. Um, they, you know, outlined it all there. And, uh, one thing I do hope is that you guys will, you know, also during, uh, times of economic uncertainty, joint ventures are also good. So please look into flight schools, um, when like I heard, airfield in the continent. Uh, we can get some of our people, um, maybe, uh, some schools in, uh, North Dakota or Florida, partner with them and, and look into that possibility. During the days of air Micronesia, we had a lot of local mechanics, flight attendants, pilots, um, and also freedom air. Like, it was nice to see, um, a lot of our people being involved in the industry. And, and thank you for doing just that with the current employees that you have. Um, but, uh, for these other fields, maybe we also need to look into. But for these other fields, maybe we also need to look into MPLT to help support industries like this to help our people grow. Thank you, thank Sidoz Masie.
Hey, my name is Mahesh Farkasman. I am by personal company MB Day Macronesia. As John mentioned, I was a contractor for building a new facility, a Macronesian cargo facility. Before I say something, as Jay said, Johnny certainly loves his husband. He doesn't know how to prepare you because he doesn't know how to sell himself. But most importantly, as a contractor, first I notice is that only John has spent billions of dollars on building a new facility in the CPA. It's not Eastland, it's not Eastland, but he spent billions of dollars building quality buildings, not a junk building, a quality buildings. When in the US, he spent a lot of money in building a new facility. Second of all is that I had opportunity to interact with all the employees, most of the employees. And before, you know, I said that not all employees are locals. Every he gives opportunity, he pays well, he treats them right, and everybody works there for a long term. And then also, Jay said, we have given a QC to five by nine companies. We have given a QC to a company which was here for the same year and still they not even use the QC yet. But why don't we give a QC for a person that's grown himself for 30 years, 30 long years? Most of the people here are private business people, are not working for private. It's not easy to be a private business in these islands because we have a small population, beautiful island though, but it's very tough to make business. I don't know how many people have been in Rhoda and met and bought a grocery there. I have small contracts in Rhoda, everything's expensive in Rhoda. When was the last time I full container shipment to Rhoda? If not, Macronesian cargo, moving stuffs to Rhoda, we will not even have a grocery in Rhoda, you know, we don't have stuffs. You're, you're, there's only one person, he said, a small cargo boss. So for me, to make sure, I'm a full supporter of this because, yes, I might have a conflict because I'm a contractor, but as a contractor, I hate him, I don't want to be, he's not easy to work with, he's a district. And then he's a nightmare to work with and the guys can knock on me back. Still, he's a genuine businessman and then, you know, we need a genuine businessman to support, to give opportunity, to help, to help him grow because several times I asked him, why are you not doing passenger? He said, it's tough, I'm sleeping good, I can, it's not easy, it's small money and I can't, I don't want me to sleep good. I don't know why he's getting into this, you know, he's a, but something happened to him. I purely think he want to support the community. I purely think he has, he has noticed what, what you're going through in recent days of one company monopolizing, threatening us, so I'm full support to the board to give him all of his, all of his honesty.
Would anyone else like to ask any questions?
My name is Antonio Sabran Jr. And I call the CNMI my home. Before I start, I just want to let it be clear, I'm not an economist. I don't have a degree in business, actually, I don't even have a degree. I'm just a man that goes CNMI home and I'm going to die there. I just want to, I just want to keep it simple. Why I support giving them the QC, weights and benefits. I believe that their weight and benefits meet, it not exceeds what other companies provide. We see it for years and years, we not get it. Many of our companies here rely on cheap imported skilled labor. Yes, they're skilled, they're cheap. Not many companies are willing to pay and provide the benefits that these companies provide. You can, I'm sure they'll be willing to open the books for you. They have low, very low turnover rates, majority of their workers are locals. And when they go get that job, they hold on to it. I know in the community, we talk about certain, very few companies like PHL, for example, growing up. We always wanted to get, get into work there because you know that when you work there, you're going to be safe. So when people get the job, they hold on to it. And that's just a lot. I've heard it said, many companies have asked for QC and promised you to do this and that. They're doing it. You walk to the airport, you see their million dollars, a couple million dollar house. They're not doing it, they've done it and I believe they continue to do it. So it makes good sense for a government to help companies like this grow, you know, especially with the government work. How many agencies and departments have paid for people, people to come in and learn, teach them how to streamline their department? And time and time again, the reports have came back that they paid for that says, okay, we need to cut this and we need to cut that, it's redundant. And they've never, those reports that they paid for stay on the shelf and gathered off, we know actually in it. And I'm not saying that, that before the decision makers are making bad decisions. I also know that we live in a very tight community where we're really blue tight, where it's easy for us to say, okay, this, this person is not needed. Okay, this person is to be cut, but when that person's your primo, your neighbor, your friend, people that you bumped into, you know, that makes that, that kind of decision really hard. But I truly believe that if there's more companies like this that step up to the plate and provide good wages and good benefits, when the time comes when, like now, during times of low economy, those redundancies, those, those blowed is more pronounced, right? I, if there's more companies like this, I think it would be easier for the decision makers to be able to say, okay, we have to let you go knowing that there's opportunities for them to come, you know. I hear it time and time again, say that we need workforce development. Ah, my mother's a skilled mechanic. He wanted to live here, he tried to live here, but right now he's in Saudi Arabia. He doesn't want to be there, but there's no, he doesn't get paid what he feels his worth over there, you know. So I said, you guys can go outside of their hammock and just park and watch a photo, local guys, the local ladies that work there. Watch them for years, how long they stay around because they could, they give good benefits and good wages. So based on that alone, I, I know they deserve this. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chairman, Reverend, and to the board members present here today. And, you know, I just want to say on behalf of the people of Rhoda, to everyone here today in support of this application, we want to thank you for also fighting with us and trying to get more opportunities for people of Rhoda. I'm Donald Malonia, I'm the, one of the Senate members for Rhoda. And I do want to share some of the sentiments that I've received from our community as I spoke to them about the, this application that's before CEDO and what are some of the opportunities that may, may come from it and what are some of the benefits that hopefully we can get out of it. And so with that, I just want to say that I, I stand here and I come here in full support of JNP Holdings' application for a QC and that their proposed inter-island transportation services with CNMI and how that is a crucial step forward for a region in addressing the transportation challenges and promising improved connectivity, affordability, and economic growth. Currently, the CNMI relies on, as you all know, on a single airline for inter-island flights, creating significant issues for a lot of our patients, a lot of our businesses and our residents, particularly for Rhoda. And that this lack of competition results in high airfares, limited flight options, and rigid schedules that fulfill the travelers' needs. For Rhoda, these challenges are especially pronounced and as high travel costs limit residents' mobility, particularly for essential travel like medical care, businesses, and family obligations. Additionally, costly transportation of goods to and from Rhoda raises the cost of living and hampers local businesses' ability to compete with those on site in Tinian. JNP Holdings plans to offer an alternative air solution which would introduce much-needed competition, providing more frequent flights and affordable options for passengers and freight. This would address longstanding transportation challenges that have hindered our island's growth and connectivity. An additional airline would reduce fares, increase accessibility, and give residents and businesses the flexibility they need to thrive. For Rhoda, this would notably reduce travel commodity costs with a significant positive impact on the local economy and quality of life. One of the most pressing issues that our people face is the limited access to specialized medical care. All island travel for medical treatment is prohibitively expensive and frequent flights often fail in meeting urgent needs. One example is I broke my glasses too late ago, but I couldn't fly out just to get new glasses. And so imagine all the people that are there needing that emergency need that probably don't qualify for a medevac but have to wait for the next available flight. A second airline offering competitive service would make travel to larger medical centers more accessible, especially for residents needing frequent medical visits. Additionally, you know, we have a lot of people on dialysis that have to be on site three time, both through dialysis, three times a week. And so that, they have very limited time to fly to Rhoda to visit friends and families. And they, they have to pretty much move here to Saipan and leave everything behind. And so while I fully support JNP Holdings' calls and their application, I also believe it is essential for CEDO to provide a transparent review and a process to monitor the company's progress and meeting its commitments as well as to ensure that there's accountability for the promise that they're giving as part of these benefits. And so I strongly support JNP's application. And with that, I would just like to offer several proposals as the board members get together and discuss the application. And that's for JNP to consider, like what other speakers have mentioned before, is maybe look at another option or another bracket to include medical referral patients to kind of help with the costs, whether it be on referral or on their own out-of-pocket expense. You know, as we know, medical referral, whether it be in or out in our CEDO, is one of the largest expenses of our healthcare system. And so maybe just a little help in that area could go a long way. And additionally, right now, as some of you may have read in the news, Star Mariana stopped providing the free service of a CBP officer to Rhoda. You know what that would mean is that we wouldn't have any more flights to Guam and that would make travel to Guam or anywhere else much more expensive. And so the Rhoda delegation took it upon itself to cover this cost and that's costing us close to $8,000 a month. And so part of the consideration that we ask is if and when you do plan to go into or consider the Rhoda-Guam route, if that's something that you can take on and assist the government and people of Rhoda transporting a CBP officer to clear passengers wanting to go to Guam. Because once we lose that, that segment, we lose a lot of opportunities for our people and our visitors to go in and out of Rhoda. So with that, again, everyone here is supportive of this. I know a lot of you guys are site member residents, but the biggest impact is on the people of Rhoda. So we thank you for your support with, and enjoying us and the rest of us in support of their application. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Chris Bogo, I'm also from Rhoda. I strongly support the application of JNP Holdings for this qualifying certificate. By listening to people tonight, I realized that they've been here for 30 years and now they're applying for QC for another 25 years. So that's a commitment to be in the CNMI for over 50 years. So I applaud you for, for being here in the island to help us grow our industry and our economy. But I want to share something. I'm a constant medical referral patient from Rhoda. And at one time, Star Mariana stopped flying from Saipan to Rhoda. And guess who stepped in this company? And I happened to experience flying as a passenger on Mac Air. And this morning, I just came from Guam and as I enter and I look at the first-class seating, and I remember flying with Mac with that big, you know, passenger seating. And I'm like, I wish if they're going to start operating with the same seating, I would be flying with the proposal of Senator that if the medical referral people can be given opportunities in the future, but I will pay my flight according to the price. So please support the application of JNP Holdings. And that was a nice slide that I took from Saipan to Rhoda, round trip, thank you.
Also, sorry, but we have about just a little bit over five minutes to go before we've got to wrap things up. So I would say we probably have time for one more person to speak and then we've got to close up. All right, does anyone have any questions, question? Okay, well, I'm wondering if the applicant has any closing remarks?
Is Jay gone? Yeah, just seen he's still here. Thanks, everyone, I very much appreciate being here and the words and I'll pass them on to my wife, too. So thank you again, I know it's, you got out of your way and it's been, we've been here for some time now. Again, appreciate it, thank you. And we'll make, we'll try and do our best to make this happen as soon as possible. But nothing in aviation is fast, we just, so bear with us, but we'll, we'll be on board momentarily. Thank you.
All right, just a reminder, if you are here present, we would definitely like to know that you're here by signing the sign-in sheet.
All right, so ini ke istan i utti mun i kunta iniku publiku i finaisin sinakumpenia i JNP Holdings mamamaisin tax abatement with the qualifying certificate. Za kana to du dua i man gaigi man masupu putesti na aplikasyon iparomanoi qualifying certificate za mai puk na umanatxadik za manoi guatu i gubetnu za ma fitma za ginin enosia na isinyaluku no managwa is ti passenger airlines para lutu Tinian Saipan. All right, poseni i dipresenti pago za si Sidoz Masie si Kuri na gumaigi geno pata lela.
Si Congressman Castro.
Si Congressman Aldan.
Okay, pos alright, Kuri. Okay, Kuri, bunitu i life coverage.
Unungu kazu.
Yes, bunitu i life coverage, za ini ke is that we're gonna conclude gua okupon sangan atisadita close.
All right, pos esti na historia mafatu mogi ginini Mariana sagupa za sempre u bagua mas no community outreach ginini Mariana sagupa za nginwa hiningo ya si gue lo amaga o si no si gue la agatete na man malago pa ba e hugungi komunidadza ba e no para talangus office ya na historia no esti gi tinitonya i lunis estabetnis ya na aktibidad galung komunidadnae gi gungwa para masusedi nae importante na suntu sempre u saunau i Mariana sagupa toksho gi kada hafa na suntu ginigiza saipa. Si Sidoz Masie gue lo amaga.
Ista, si Sidoz Masie lokal. Okay, si Sidoz Masie, all right. Poseni i, that concludes our special coverage, CEDO public hearing, i Marianas High School. I finaisin kana taza no kumon. I finaisin kana taza nu kumontra. Finaisin esti in fact qualifying certificate. All right. Pu se niki? Dus Mausi, that's the ibiraga. Right? All right. Pu sesta, that's the otrubiya talu. Thank you so much for tuning in to Marianasagupa's special coverage. We need a public hearing for qualifying certificate.